All right.
Seven o'clock.
Wait, wait. Six fifty-nine.
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
It's now.
You're trying to do that?
No.
You can't get one.
Heather.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that there.
Okay, I'll start.
It is seven o'clock and I would welcome you to the Village of Webster Board Meeting for February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. If you would stand with me for the pledge. Jerry, would you lead it?
Yes, sir. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for being seated.
What?
As our, well, as our policy is, we will open the meeting with a public comment portion. And if there is anyone here who feels we would like to address the board, you may do so at this time.
Well, it looks like we're out of time.
I know I'm going to come up in a little bit and talk to you more about the clock, but I didn't want to mix and match the different committees. So I did want to, first, I want to congratulate all of you and Matt Chatfield on the four and a half million dollar grant. Just exceptional. I've got to tell you, I think that it's wonderful the village was able to do that. And being involved in the Harmony House and the Course of Genesee, which was one of the projects that was on that list, I can tell you that it's a welcome, a welcome thing for, for our village. So congratulations on that. The second thing is that if you happen to travel down North Avenue and look to the west, you're going to notice on our trailhead to the Hojegue Trail that there is a new addition to the kiosk there. And I know Heather talked to me about trying to explain this to the board, and I wanted to let you know that it's been a four or five-year project getting this done. I want to thank McAllister Stein for being really patient with all of us, getting this accomplished. It's gone through several iterations, but it is a beautiful presentation there about the history of the area, talking about, you know, the industrial area that's there that most people can't even see now. It also has a map of the Hojegue Trail. And it also serves, many of you don't, maybe if you've ever run up there, there's a little parking lot there that you can park in. It'll actually, can actually serve as a trailhead. One of the original ideas of having that parking lot there was the concession by that developer to give to the village to allow us to have a parking lot to access the trail, which is very different in the village because in the village, the Hojegue Trail is paved. A little different, which is really Jake's idea long ago, and it worked out great. So underneath all that pavement, there's still some railroad ties in there, believe it or not. So the, but we do, but if you get a chance to go down there, take a look into two-sided display on both sides of the kiosk. And I know the bill pay is going to be coming through in a couple of weeks, and I just wanted to make sure you knew what was going on there and how long it took for doing it and why we did it to make sure that we could highlight not only the trail itself, but the history, the real rich history of that section of the village. Because before there was ever a trail there, in case those of you are new to Webster, there are railroad tracks. And those railroad tracks were the lifeblood of the industry to this village for many, many decades. All the commercial activity happened here on Main Street, but what you didn't see is all the industrial and shipping industry happening there on North Avenue, which is one of the reasons why that section is in the village. So anyways, so thank you on both scores. Congratulations. And I wanted to give you a sense of what that, what that kiosk was there for. Any questions I could answer for you?
Is that coming out?
About that?
Is that coming out of Parks Budget? The cost of it?
I don't know where Jake has, we can bring it out, we can take it out of the store preservation budget. That was, that was the initial idea. But I think also we have money coming out of the store preservation budget for the plaque we're putting in Edna Struck Memorial. So we may have to do some negotiations, how this money's accounted for on the budget. So if Heather can assist with that a little bit, where it's coming out of. So it's a great question. It just happened to be two projects collided at the same time that we've been working on for several years.
You certainly have enough in the parks. Would you like to do something like that?
And just as a matter of course, as I mentioned, Edna Struck, the store preservation commission is very busy. We're really happy to have our two additional members on there right now. There is great having other people to help with the activities. We are planning a rededication to the Edna Struck Memorial Park this spring. It'd be great to have all of you there. Jake, great to have you there because you and I were first on the board when we did the presenting, the first dedication in two thousand and six. It's a long time ago now. So I'd love to see you all there. We're going to send out invitations and, and make it kind of an affair because we changed the design of the island, went even through a public hearing to change the design of the island. And so it looks different, and now it's going to have some fresh plaques on the stone to welcome people to that, that local landmark, believe it or not, that is, it is actually a local landmark, that little tiny island there. So.
Let us know if you can post about it on Facebook.
I will. All right. Well, thank you. I'll be back.
Anyone else who'd like to address the board? If not, I've closed this portion of the meeting. And as Peter alluded to, if those of you who are watching and are not aware, the Village of Webster and through the work of both village people and Rita and Matt Chatfield, it's been a two-year, well, it's been a very long process, longer than two years, but we applied last year. We were on a short list. We did not make it, but this, you're full of that, four and a half million dollars.
Heavy.
He's trying to heavy with four and a half million dollars.
I want to picture him.
But the village was honored and awarded a four and a half million dollars for the New York Forward Program Grant. And so this is something that we will be working on through probably the end of this year, getting together a committee, beginning to formulate plans, passing things on then to the state for approval before we can then progress with actual construction and other things that will be involved with it. But it has come our way, which is awesome. Thank you to all who have been part of this and worked on it. It's a great honor to be part of this.
Don't you want to pass it down to her? I'll take a touch of it.
Thank you to the board and all who were there to this outstanding. Okay, we will move now to our regular board business. And the first is a resolution to approve minutes. We have them from both January twenty-five and also February eight. So they are in front of you. If you look them over, if you know, need for changes, if there are any additions or subtractions that have asked for a motion to approve.
I'll look that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Trusty Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a motion to approve the claims and warrants. I believe that Jerry and Al, you had the opportunity to look them over.
I did.
Looks good, pretty simple.
Looks good to all. And now data for a motion to approve.
Make the motion.
Second it.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Trusty Apolito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have a resolution which involves the wastewater treatment plant. We have a resolution to set a public hearing authorizing certain improvements to the village of, well, to the village wastewater treatment plant for a total project cost of fifteen million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars on March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven fifteen P. M. This is a public hearing to consider this. This, of course, is also not inclusive of the grant that we agreed that we have received for it, so that would reduce it a bit. But this is the total project cost that we will be considering. So.
And this was obviously budgeted.
Pardon?
Obviously budgeted.
Well, not all in one year.
No. There's. You received a wee grant of one point four million, and the EFC zero percent loan of ten point six, something like that, the total of which is not fifteen million. So part of this is there's going to, well, separate from this is going to be a separate bond resolution to amend the bond, to increase the amount of the bond to the difference between what's needed, the ten point six, and what's needed for, the net is fourteen million five eighteen. So, you know, you've got to borrow an extra four million dollars or something like that. You should have gotten, but it appears you didn't. The handouts that Labella gave us to show where the fifteen million dollar, fifteen point nine million dollars comes from.
I emailed them on Saturday. I just realized I forgot to put them. I'll print them right now. But I emailed them on Saturday.
Why bother printing them now? By the time you hand them out, they'll be beyond, they'll be on the next item on the agenda.
I tell you, there's a printer right here.
Well, if you email it to them, hopefully they open their email and actually look at the attachments.
Throw them in the bucket.
If, if, if not, you'll, between now and March fourteenth, you'll see, you know, where the numbers come from. And it's, it's basically the lowest bids, you know, came in at a total of about thirteen million dollars. It's, it's all broken down on the stuff from Labella.
Okay.
But.
I will get it.
But we need to, it's, it's subject to a public hearing, not because of the bond, but because of two parts of the New York Village Law. It requires where you're borrowing money for the local improvements. It's subject to a public hearing. So it'll be a discussion of what you're spending fifteen point ninety million dollars on and why is it more than what was originally contemplated. Okay, but it needs to get, it's on ten days' notice, so it needs to get published, the legal notice and the herald by March fourth.
I can hear. So are you talking about, I have the resolution to set the public hearing and the, and the notice in the packet. You have that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what else were you talking about? Just to make sure.
I wasn't talking about anything.
Something that you said they didn't see.
Oh, that's, that's.
The breakdown.
The original, we kind of, the Zoom call that, that you were a participant of and Daryl and Jake, where they handed out to show how the fifteen point nine million came about.
Okay.
I was hopeful that.
So you did say.
The rest of the board would, would see that stuff between then and now.
It's a non-business day.
I would also mention that both documents, the wastewater treatment plant evaluation study, as well as the basis of design report for the wastewater treatment plant improvements is sitting on the desk, on the counter in the village office. And they are there for anyone who would like to stop and to look through them. One document is date thick, and the second one is much smaller. They are there.
But when, when you do see the, the breakdown from Labella, there's, there's about ninety thousand dollars, which is new, is the cost to move the town's sampling point down at the town wastewater treatment plant. And the only reason they have to move it is because the village is getting its own speeds permit, so they have to. Now, they were, before it was getting sampled all at the same place, and now it's going to be separate.
That makes sense.
So the village is paying for that because, but for the village, doing this, they wouldn't have to do a new sampling point. Hopefully, that will, will be part of the additional money to be loaned by EFC. They're not, they're not certain about that yet, hopefully.
So, resolutions before the board, to set this public hearing on the fourteenth, at seven fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Belkane?
Aye.
Trusty Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
It would be nice to be able to get this project underway by May or whenever the costs go up, any more. Okay, next we have a discussion regarding the village clock. And Peter, if you would like to come to the podium to present some ideas regarding it, it would be nice to have all four sides tell at the same time.
Yep.
Yeah.
We can do that.
If they spell correctly.
I believe we can do that. We're going to need to, obviously, we're going to get some quotes on this as well. But we have, but I believe Jake and I came to the conclusion that the company we'd seriously like to go with is Verdun Company, Verdign Company, which is a good reputable manufacturer of clocks. I'm just going to give you one second. Jake, this is for you. Talks a little bit about the overview of the mechanisms of the clock. And then if you guys would like, there's, I made copies of it at what they sent me. This is their, their PowerPoint presentation. And it's actually, it gives a good overview. Here's why I pass it down. And then this one, on the cross, no, on that. And then this one is the, the note that they sent to me, and also some more information about the clock style and the cost. There have been, so the last quote that we had was two thousand and eighteen. Obviously, a lot's happened since two thousand and eighteen. So the cost, the cost then was not entirely clear. We thought that perhaps the clock could come in at around, somewhere between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars at that point. It was, it was difficult to know because we weren't looking at apples to apples in terms of models. I think we have a pretty decent idea what a model would look like now. And if that's the case, then the clock's cost would come in at about twenty-six thousand dollars for replacing it, about thirteen hundred dollars, a little over thirteen hundred dollars, if the company were to do the installation, which I would recommend for a couple of reasons. One is because, as Jake said eloquently today, we're not really clock installers. And the second thing is that we're a little unique because our clock is not going to get directly put on the ground, or rather, it's going to get put on a cement base. If you go down there, it's tightened up a little bit over the surface of the ground, so it's going to make it a little more unique to install it. This, this first one that has the cover page, this is, gives you an idea of the conversation that, I guess, conversation by email? I don't know. Whatever, the writing, we went back and forth by email. At the, at the meeting that we talked about last, you, you gave me the picture that you see on that second, or I guess page three, that you chose. That design isn't quite exactly designed that they have, but they have some clocks that are very, very close. And they have four sides that would allow the village to have the actual, you know, actual Village of Webster or Webster on top. I would recommend Village of Webster, but, and then, and you can see some of the design elements there. You see, the one I put at the back, the second page, the last, second to last page, is actually the clock that is part of, it's in the, it's in the town of Avon, that the, it was purchased by the Lions Club there. And again, it's not exactly what you gave me, but it is very, very close.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the small elements are a little different, like the little corances on it. The, the top is a little more curved on the clock, you see on the second to last page, but it is very, very similar. You'll notice that this company also was involved in the Canadaguan National Clocks that you've talked about, including the one that's on Bridge Road. They're, they've done all the clocks in the Rochester area, they said. So it also, it also gives us a connection there, so we actually know their work, and we can see it in front of us. The, I believe that the style of clock they'd be looking at is probably the reference to on the front page is four MST two is, is very likely what that clock is that we'd be looking at. The PowerPoint gives you a very good idea of some of these as well. It talks about the height, the dials, options that are available. And then it gives you examples of clocks they put in in different places in New York. They were very instant, this, this was like a really fast email. They gave me back on this PowerPoint, which basically they were able to look at what we have here in New York as comparisons. Again, we would have to probably bid this out. I'm guessing this is above, you know, substantial amount of money, really, for the village. And so we would need to look at what, no, we could look at other companies, but if we were to go with this, it gives us a good idea of what we would be doing. So Jake talked about the synchronicity. I talked about that at the very beginning, was, we do, they did say in an email, they, they keep their clock synchronized by having a rod in the inside that keeps the clocks all turning at the same speed. And they could all be wrong, but they'd have to all be wrong. So, but if they're right, they're all going to be right. And they also have a local technician that's in New York that you can call to correct this, in upstate New York, if you are specific, because New York's pretty big, in upstate New York, that you can call to, to help you fix the clock as well. So there is that option that you have to handle too. Again, I'm not trying to direct this specifically to this company, but they are very reputable, and it's a, it's a good company if we end up going with that. Certainly, their response to me was a lot of material, and they gave a lot to look at. They gave some great ideas of what the cost would be for we to move forward. I believe that, I don't know what the current total is in the Parks and Recreation Fund. The last email I had was from Marcia, and that was, it had about two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in it at the time. So one thing I can tell you is that, well, it will be some money. And that, that, that fund will, will be, it will be impacted. It won't be impacted negatively by any stretch by having this expense come out of it. So.
They said that they, they had the one, they're, they're the ones that manufactured the one at C and B?
They did. All of the, all of the.
Because that's a good-looking.
Yeah, it is.
All the, all the local ones. We don't have to get one that's exactly like that if you don't want, but at least we know what their, what their quality is.
Yeah.
So. And we will make sure this face, the face actually does have the word village spelled correctly.
Yeah, that would be nice.
That's a little secret out there for you watching. And so, but one thing good is that the, is that we will be able to make sure that the clock is synchronous and showing the right time all the time on all four faces. So. You can also see their specs on what they, how they design the clocks and making sure that they're not, they're, they know they're outside clocks, and they're specifically designed for the outside. The one you look at down there, which has been there a while, has done us a good service. You can see that the paint's chipping off and is corroding a little bit. So this will, this at least gives us a sense as we start out, we have a good weatherized material. So. Anybody, have any, I know I gave you a lot of material, but you asked me to.
Yeah, that's good.
Does anybody have any questions?
Warranty, I do know, so.
There wasn't any discussion I had with him about a warranty that I can ask. Like you said, he got back to me in like five minutes after I asked him a question about synchronous side, so I'll ask him that as well if there's a warranty there. But it's not, as far as I can tell, it's not in this particular twenty-six thousand, but there may be some tech support in this twenty-six thousand. That was suggested by, so. Yeah, so it might cost us a little extra money.
Peter, is there a time limit, what you're working at for this?
I would, I would, if we could, I'm going to, I'm going to need Heather to talk a little bit. I never was really good on whether or not we need bids or how we do quotes. So if this requires quotes, I'll go online to find you quotes for a similar clock. If it requires bids, it might take a little longer. It'd be great if they could get this done in like, I don't know, with the launch, then have it in by springish.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is because I have the feeling that there's going to be maybe a design change that that's.
Ah, okay.
We've got to, especially now with the grant.
Yes.
And I would not like to have it set in place and then have to move it.
Sure.
Because we have a different concept, or a different concept evolves regarding the park.
Well, we could be, we could be, I think we could be very flexible about this, and then.
I'd hate to see the cost escalation, however.
Yeah.
There's enough regarding.
It, it, I think, I think this probably is, I mean, it's hard to estimate based on two thousand and eighteen, but I would guess that we are about four or five thousand dollars over what it was in eighteen, as far as, as far as inflated costs. So, so yeah, like, like you were just talking about the sewers, the longer you wait, the more expensive it will be. But that being said, Daryl, unless we're, I remember the, the parks plan for the changes at Veterans Memorial Park, and I think the clock might have moved maybe slightly north, but it wasn't substantial in terms of positioning. So maybe we could resurrect those plans and take a look. Because maybe if the clock isn't moving, then there'd be no harm in, unless the sidewalks being dug up, there'd be no harm in getting it. So, but I believe the Veterans Memorial was going to be, and that plan was going to be flipped to the north side in that plan. So.
But who knows if even that plan is going to be.
I agree.
Because if you, if you read, if you read what Matt Chatfield submitted to the state, the key thing was probably going to be a bigger gazebo, a bigger bandstand.
Yep.
And if that's the case, the clock's sort of pretty close to that gazebo.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I know.
If you wait, you can get, pay for the clock out of the four point five million dollars.
We could do that, too.
That would be a fine thing.
The parks can pay for it.
Either way.
They can pay for it, but then.
It's a lot of money they have parks for. Go towards something else.
But then you may end up moving it.
Well, unless we just, unless we, unless we just synchronize when we do these things, right? So we could simply just, we, again, we brought this up last, last fall, or last, late last fall, and then kind of let the winter go, and this partially my fault. But, but now, now that we're here, we know we have the grant, things have changed, so we can just adapt, adapt to that. And if this, we look at, if the four point five million apart that's going to go to, you know, reservoir, you know, doing different things or redesigning Veterans Memorial Park, then we'll just roll this into that. That's another possibility. I mean, the clock has been not functional in the best way for several years, so another year won't probably make much difference.
We are getting a lot of calls about it, actually, but recently.
Well, it's about time. So, sorry. Anyway, so yeah, that's.
As long as we can establish the clock, decide what we want out of it, oh, and ready to go.
Yes.
Then it can be put.
Yeah, it's supposed to be shovel-ready, so how's that? Yeah. I think we can do that. So.
I believe, you know, I read, reread the village's submission for that grant, and really, the very first project was Veterans Park. And so maybe you need to get Matt in here, and how long's it going to take to, you know, redo that part, you know?
Is there any idea?
Maybe you can get that done in this year.
Maybe, yeah. Something to look at. I mean, I think we had, we, we actually, we had a committee that formed to actually push at that design, and I was there at those meetings, because I'm at all those meetings. And so the, so the thing is that, you know, we looked at all that. I think that that design was very good. But it also, it did involve enlarging certain things and moving certain things in different sections. So, yeah.
What's the turnaround time in a perfect world? So, yep, we're ready to go. They give you timetable?
They didn't give me a timetable, but when Jake and I talked about this originally, it is, it's months, not years. So it's like, we can get this, it could be done fairly quickly. They actually have, the, the brochures they put together, they have all the parks there. They're, they're already, pretty much ready to go when you say go. So. Yeah. Yeah, I don't think we should move it. I think that seems, that seems counterproductive, but it would be good. But we're really, so you're really asking me what's the timeline on, on redesigning the park? Yeah. I'm not sure about that. That might take time. Because we, we were talking about some enlargements, some moving of sidewalks, some additional drainage issues in the center where it gets really wet in the summertime. So crating.
The bricks, oops, taking the bricks off the ground, I wanted to do that.
Yep. Well, you mean, you're the trees, I mean?
Huh?
You mean, you're the trees, or?
Not all the veterans names and everything. I thought they made.
Oh, yeah, it's making like a wall. We had talked about that.
A wall instead of.
Yeah, you and I had mentioned that.
Walking out of the grass.
So, I don't know, maybe, would you be willing to like have, maybe, maybe this is a discussion at some kind of workshop about the park? I mean, just kind of roll this into that. Does that sound?
I mean, couldn't you also, if he talks of the clock manufacturing, decide on this, on this clock, whatever, and go and ask him if they know of a price increase to let you guys know. And if you know there's going to be an increase, you know, or what you paid for. If you know there's gonna be an increase, or what you're paying for, maybe just not install it until, you know, they could-
Not sure, we could take ownership of it and just put it up with, you know, because we're talking about any increases would be in the, so the clock itself would be like $26,000, the installation's like, like a little less than, like a little more than 13, so it's 15. So if it's 1500 and the installation stays, even that goes up slightly, it's a small percentage relative to the clock. So if we lock the clock in, the installation is the only thing that would go up, so that's actually a pretty good idea.
And they could hold it right at the manufacturing facility until we're ready to take them out.
See Heather, he does it.
Good enough.
I know.
Okay. So, how would you like, how would you like me to proceed? How would you like me to proceed, with the exception of, I know I gotta go find some quotes or bids, or do I have to find quotes or bids for this?
Well, we gotta look into that.
Okay, all right, good.
The General Municipal Law 103 says any purchase over $20,000 requires the public bidding. A public works project is, the threshold is $35,000. So Jake's idea is, well, if they come and install it, doesn't that turn it into a public works project?
I like it.
I do like it.
Although it seems, out of $1,300, out of the $27,000, you're all of a sudden, you're getting around the public bidding process. Doesn't sit too well with me, but, um.
I'll let you just advertise it.
Jake's building his whole-
Why would I be as bad if we're looking at one company and one clock? My suggestion is, is that Jake and I need to look into it. So you don't have to tell Peter to go get quotes, don't do anything. Because if it's a sole source, that's an exception to the-
It is.
To the, to the public bidding requirements too, so.
There are other companies that make clocks too there.
All I said was, just hold on until we can get back to Peter, as though whether it's gotta be better.
Okay. So the next step, so the next step I'm taking it is, you're gonna talk to me about what we need to do for the next step?
Correct. Jake or I will get back to you.
Heather, we'll put that in a minute.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I, sorry, I take so much of your time, but this is, this will be, this will be a much better looking clock.
In the interim, you could simply contact the Vernon Company and see if they'll do what Aaron suggested, and if we buy it now, can we not take delivery on it till-
Okay.
Six months from now, or whenever.
Okay, I'll do that.
You know, to see if they allow, would do that. Basically, they would store it for us.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's exactly, that's exactly what I will do, and then you guys get back to me about what I need to do as far as bidding or quoting.
Right.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
I'm glad we're moving. Okay. You all have a copy of the budget to actual report. You can look at it over at your leisure. One thing that I wouldn't make mention of in the initial page, where it review references revenue. There is, all of them have a parentheses that you get percent use. That column, they all have a parentheses around it. Those that should have a parentheses around would be those that would be, I believe, she said, less than the 100%. In talking to Danielle, she just parentheses around all of that. Usually there is, you know, there's, like if we, for example, if you take the line of counting sales tax, which is about the fourth going down, you see that the original budget is for $1,829,000, and year-to-date it's $1,098, or $1,098,000. So we still have coming in a need for $730,000, and that is in parentheses, 60% of what we originally budgeted to the revenue. As opposed to the next line where gross utility tax, we budgeted at the original $80,000, but we received $126,000, $127,000. So we've got more than enough, and that's 158, or 150,000. So, you know. It's just that you just run through and put parentheses around all of them, okay?
I thought you were gonna hope no one saw it.
That's all right, I'm just letting the board know. Otherwise, things are fine. Okay. At this particular point, Don? Is there anything that, all right, please? I believe we have a building report from the code enforcement officer, so Aaron, if you would like to-
A report, that's just like a poster.
We've got some on the street here.
What happened this month?
We have 12 new permits, one C of all and one C of C. I think your copy actually says there were seven complaints out of the drawing. My copy is corrected, eight complaints. We do have a large copy of what those complaints are. Still working on how to print them out so you can see them.
Only took you three years.
As far as legal, we actually have a trial for Dunham tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning, yep. So we will-
Where's that downtown?
What's that?
Where's the downtown?
The Town of Webster's.
Or.
What copies do you have?
For-
Oh, yeah. Yep, I got you.
Yeah, I'm curious. As of today, I go by, there's still no change. I'll get updated pictures tomorrow, we're gonna print it off, report tomorrow, and-
What time is that hearing?
Uh, 9:00 AM.
Darren might show up, right?
It's set for trial. The village process to get the property cleaned up will be submitted at the next meeting, and I'll be asking for a hearing before the village board. That goes along with happening after the trial for tomorrow. See what happens there, so we can update that as well. Green River Crossing, work is continuing as planned. They are selling extremely well again right now. So they've only got three more to lock in Phase Two. Phase Three is approved, so they're gonna be starting to get some work going on that. Mind you, there's only, that's only a four-phase project, so there's still gonna be well ahead of schedule. So it's gonna be very well over there. Tasty Project has been canceled with no further information. So that's unfortunate. They'll continue on, try and get that building filled and rent it out. There's been a few instances of the Town of Webster's Code Enforcement that sent letters to residents in the village. This has been addressed with the town, so that should hopefully no longer happen again.
Letters saying what?
Sending them violation letters. I have a copy of the one, if you wanna see it.
How do they know, do they cite town code as a violation, or is it just not applicable?
Yeah, they have, quite, it's, it's pretty in-depth, but, you know, the big question was, obviously, why they sent it. Not even, not just by me, but by the town as well. How they, how he, how and why he sent it, because he didn't even do a site visit to know if there was a problem. If he would've done a site visit-
How did that probably come with the town's attention in the first place?
Exactly.
Yeah. So I don't have all the answers, I just, you know, talked to them about it, brought it to their attention, they said it, you know, to make sure that proper steps are taken, that it doesn't happen. This is like, said the second time that I'm aware of.
If we get something like that, I would suggest that we send it over to Don.
Okay.
Seriously?
Just to head to see it right away.
So, is the town gonna send a letter to the village resident saying, saying sorry?
Yeah.
Ignore our previous letter?
I don't know that they're gonna do that. The resident actually is the one that brought it to our attention and brought it into us. So that's how we even knew about it, so.
Well, there should be some follow-up by the person.
Yeah, and, you know, I did, he brought all the pictures of everything, of what the supposed violation was. Quite frankly, there was no violation. So, yeah. So it's corrected and, you know, everything's cleared up on our aspect of it, so.
Did a letter go back to the town?
Yes.
Referencing this, and we have a copy of it, so then-
I did not send a letter, but I can, I can, it was, it was phone conversation.
They had, yeah, we need a record on that.
Okay. Yeah, I said it was a phone conversation with the head, with the head of their department, and he ensured me that it wouldn't happen, because they actually had several questions of how that happened too, without a site visit, so they were gonna address it on their end.
So, something you're writing?
Yeah.
A phone call can be denied, it's not aniable.
Okay.
Letter was not-
Okay. I'll take care of that.
What are those addresses, can you say?
What's that?
What addresses?
This one specifically was for 18 Clover. So obviously, well within the village.
And what was it?
It was for, and I'm like, said, I can pass this down if you guys, if anybody would like to see it. It was, what's that?
Yeah, you can pass it down.
Okay, yeah, it was a notice, notice and order to remedy. It was basically, in a nutshell, saying that a room that was in the basement's not allowed, because it wasn't, no, no egress and everything else, but it's a walkout basement with no walls locking the access.
And they confirmed this was a hoax and someone's, that's happened.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we confirmed that it wasn't, because I called, when I called the town, they confirmed that it was sent and an error and stuff like that, so. Other than that, I have nothing, if there's any questions for me.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, Jake, looks like you're up next, Department of Public Works.
Just wanted to couple things, thank Matt, worked along with Matt and the, and the crew on that grants, congratulations. And he's really good to see Kerry and watching him carry the ball across to the goal line and putting things on. He's definitely driven and it's worked out good on our behalf. Then, New York, I think the mayor discussed it, but that New York Forward Grant is a little different than, just for some clarity, a little different than a lot of grants where you put in some, for a specific project, and then you get it. The selection's really just the first step. You kind of brainstorm and put your own ideas. If they like your idea or the direction you're going, you're selected. Then you have a pretty intensive planning process where you really develop a strategic investment plan, and that gets specific, that goes through the state. So this is really the, the selection's step one. It's not, and here's what we wanna do, and you're selected to do it. It's a pretty good idea, selected, then you really do the intensive planning and finalize all the plans, and then implement it after that. So it's a little different process than a lot of grants. But you know what's exciting?
Well, we should get Matt in here to explain the process.
That's a good idea.
Because, you know, do you have to submit plans for the entire $4.5 million all at once? Or how much time do they give you to? Because if they make you do it all at once based on what Matt was doing there, that's, that could take two years just to do that, and then meantime, nothing gets done. Or can you just piecemeal it? You know what I'm saying? Like, you just focus on the Veterans Park, and then the, the streetscape stuff on that little section on Main Street, you know? Or do we have to do the whole, does the village have to do the whole four and a half million all at once?
It'd be good to have him come in and just talk to us.
Yeah, I think it's having the plans together, but the implementation, again, I think can take place at different times, but I think you have to have a plan for the whole.
Yeah, the whole thing.
Well, even a plan, how do you, like, for example, the 88 acres for Xerox?
Right.
There's not even a developer, so how, how do you submit any plans for that?
Nope, that's, that's very pointless.
Because that was another major part of the grant application was coming up with this multi-use, you know, residential, commercial thing over there on there. But obviously, the village isn't gonna build it, you gotta get something. The village can support it with infrastructure or whatever, but it's part of the four million.
It's gonna cost them the four million.
Yeah, it's gonna cost them. So how do you plan for that?
Actually, this is all part of that planning process, it's got to start very soon. I guess being selected is a, is obviously a huge step.
Oh my gosh.
It's a first step, so that's very exciting.
And you get Matt in here.
He discussed wanting to have a potential workshop.
Definitely.
Matt just wanted right now, to be excited about the fact that we were given?
No, I understand that.
People are coming in to share a timeline in terms of what now has to happen, the scope. There has to be a group that will become selective, a small group, or a representative group, that will begin the process of developing these ideas. And even he said it will take to the end of the year, probably, in terms of putting things together before, as we get approval and then moving on, so. I'm just excited that we have the first step, and that we can get moving from there.
You guys mentioned that you wanted to have a workshop to discuss like your ideas for the project, but would you prefer Matt, I just messaged him. Would you prefer him to come to the next meeting to do a preliminary explanation? And then set up a workshop? Okay. All right, he'll sit, he'll be at the next meeting.
Thanks, all right.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, just real quick, the, you might notice the bill's a cross-connection control thing for Jim Scott. He's a backflow tester, and it's something that, with our kind of shared services and intermunicipal agreements, we do with the school. He goes around, he'll pass the school's backflows for him, so it's, it's another example of cooperation and things that we share in that we get, you know, all these things from the school sometimes. When we're doing lease, when they were all frozen, we had, but then they had somebody over here with New York right following them out, which really sped up that process, so it's a give and take, back and forth thing, but it's a real good investment. He does our own for us, which is well worth it. Our own, you know, I think we have six backflow test, uh, or devices, but then he does the schools too, and through that intermunicipal agreement, of course.
So it's running, you know, this PEB system, does someone that is qualified for that, or licensed? Is there a ability to get some revenue, have them cool?
I, I think there's always that opportunity, but we've talked to, I remember talking to Parks and Rec about it before, and offering that up, and I think they went and got somebody that was certified. The, I know the fire district, the, the executive director there, he got certified as well. So he does the ones for the fire district.
Just the thought.
Yeah, we, we shared around, but it's a, you know, it's a really good thing, and I invited that to pass it to me. Does a great job with them, like I said, saving ours or something. There's an issue, they rebuilt it, and instead of $1,000 or more, it's costing them kit to rebuild it.
Oh, that's great.
One other thing, that, Napoli, I can't pronounce the second name, is back to that DFAS, or PFAS, or PFAS. If you remember, it's like a class actions lawsuit, they will probably bring up next time, I think, to have. I think they actually, you guys authorized me to sign the original thing. It was a retainer and there was no cost, it would come out of whatever was awarded. They got a settlement with 3M for water departments and water systems, not yet with wastewater, but that's the second part of what they're doing, so we're still keeping our foot in the door. As I think, if you remember, PFAS is some of the firefighting phones and things like that that are kind of forever chemicals, they don't go away. I can imagine, you know, there's part of the water department, water systems have to test for it now. One of the things I can see them wanting to do is control it on the way out, or at least test and understand what they have. And I'm assuming those tests are pretty costly. That this effort, or reason, I think we might keep our foot in the door on this, is that we could be eligible for some reimbursement for some funding to cover the cost of these tests and things down the road. I don't know how quick, you know, this has been, I think, a few years, at least. So there's an amendment to the agreement because the settlement that they have, and I can speak to it better, but I just gave it to him so. But the settlement that they have with 3M for the water departments was a payment over time, over a 10-year time period rather than a lump sum. Their original retainer agreement didn't contemplate anything other than a lump sum, so I think that's- So I think that's what the town's had an early review. Um, so long story short, probably put that on the next agenda if we can, just to authorize being assigned that amendment to it. Um, because it incorporates the payment over time part of it. And basically just they just says that they get paid first, um, before we would get anything there portioned out when we fill out first. And then if it's the first installment, then if they needed to get more money in the second installment, they wouldn't till they were made whole. And then we would get stuff after the fact, but they're doing all the work. So it seems pretty fair. So, and I think that was it.
Well, move them to the front office.
I don't have anything. We're just moving along. Um, Karen. We're just moving along. Um, hopefully back to full staff soon. Um, but in the office. Jake, I know Karen had an idea with, um, the sewer stuff. If we could come up with kind of an updated update for people for the website and our Facebook page to kind of see like updated plans that people might be interested to see that. So that's something that we wanted to work on. No.
Quick, I had a lot of copies of that too. Um, I just submitted today and it's on, you know, we've been using a community, we're doing community development block grants for quite a while in Monroe County. Um, the timing is unfortunate for our construction season. They have a meeting, a steering committee meeting in January. We have to have the grants in there due tomorrow. Um, they'll let us know in May if they intend to put us on the list. They find out, I think in June or July, what money they're getting from the federal government. And then the county legislature then will vote on it in September usually. And then they let us know, hey, you can get this. And by then October timeframe, there's no time in this time, this year to do it. So we always, like we're doing the other side of Kircher Park and a cast your current place pipeline on Donovan Street as part of what we submitted for last year at this time. We're gonna do that this spring. Um, we submitted that application. This year you guys just approved, board approved the, uh, IMA for the sidewalks with the town. Um, we were able to utilize that right away. I met with Pat Stevens, um, in the town highway. And going over, we submitted a joint for doing Phillips Road, if you recall, Phillips Road from Moppel and Valero down to Orchard Street. It crosses a village town line five times. Um, so we didn't want to just do, you know, 35 feet here, 100 feet here and skip over, do just the stuff in the village. Uh, it would be kind of foolish. Um, so we, um, worked with them. We submitted one application with village to be the grantee and then we would just get reimbursement for the portion. Um, with, we can see what they, how much they say we're gonna get. I was, say, optimistic when I put it in. Last year I was overly optimistic and we didn't get nearly what we were looking for. We hoped we asked for, but, um, we've been pretty fortunate. Um, it's a great, great program and we're supported really well. Um, we tried to turn them over fast. So they liked that. So that's just went in this afternoon. Um, so we had that, we had the hits sent on it here. So we put in for the Phillips Road one that we've been talking about. So they'll go in as part of now this year's budget process is we kind of put in what we, what we suspected that's gonna be. And I think about it, I think with the price increases, was that my timer? Um, with the price increases, we, uh, we might, I might have to update that with Danielle. Cause I think Aaron gave it to her and, uh, the prices are, a couple of years ago, concrete was 103, on the bid, on the bid, 103 bucks a yard. Now it's 173. So, uh, the cost of everything is, is kind of. Yeah. But.
Well, good. You didn't need that super resolution as part of the application.
Oh, it's not as part of the application, but I put on there April of 2024 is when we're gonna address it if we can. So I was gonna send that. But that was, yeah, it's a great point. Part of it's an environmental checklist, review checklist. And secrets are part of that. And in fact, I'm looking at last year's, Will always did these grants. And especially all the secret stuff. Um, I'm gonna double check and make sure that we did one for Kircher Park before we do Kircher Park. And even if we think we might've done it, but I can't find it exactly, we might do one for the Kircher Park one, just to make sure that we've got it done. Whatever this year's, because if we don't do it right away or before with the grant, that is something that.
Well, because, you know, I think technically it is a type two action because you're just replacing the sidewalks. You're not building new sidewalks in a different place or anything. You're just replacing them. So it's a type two action. And I think technically you don't really need a resolution. You just, someone in the agency has, makes that determination.
Okay.
So I think that's probably what, if there, if you don't find any resolutions that Will did, maybe you just check some box that said type two or something, which is fine.
Yeah. There's also a memo where.
Yeah, you can just do it internally. They're saying, saying it's a type two and, and it doesn't really require a, a, a resolution.
And if there's anything needs to go to the county, let me know and I can fill it in for you. Is there stuff that gets sent to the county?
Oh, no, this wouldn't be, uh, it's tough because Phillips Road is a county road for the county. I talked to the, uh, highway guy yesterday. The county doesn't have any sidewalks. And it's just like the state. Um, where along Main Street 250, there are maintenance responsibilities and maintenance jurisdiction. Um, and we did have, that's why we wanted to press and get that IMA, cause there was discussions in the seventies. And, and when there were sidewalks going in on Phillips Road, it would cross municipal boundaries. And now my timer's up. Um, but we crossed municipal boundaries. There was discussion about a, we put them in jointly, the village made it, because we're doing, we didn't, you know, the town didn't have any sidewalks till this a few years ago. So, I mean, we're not gonna lift the plow up and not allow, you know, going down to get to the rest of our sidewalks north of, uh, countrymen or there's north of the expressway. So, um, but, yeah.
Um, I would mention to the board and those here that, um, this Saturday, there will be a memorial service, viewing and a service for Danielle Kruger's mom who passed last week. So I would mention that.
It's in her email.
The condolences I sent out to, we sent out to Danielle and the family. Uh, at this time, I would announce that our next village board meeting is Thursday, March 14th here at seven o'clock. And then we'll forward to, I think we all, tune in. And, um, at this point, I guess there's no other business. Uh, do you want to get a motion to?
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Oh, David?
Aye.
Vote? Motion's good.